We'll call our meeting to order. First item is roll call. Diane?
Mayor Skoug.
President.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Grossman.
I'm here.
Councilmember Mallory.
Here.
Councilmember Nye.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting. Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Rooney.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Item number three, discussion. Lighting, section fourteen. Richard?
I promised Diane I'd be very brief. In 1998, the town endeavored to come up with a lighting standard for section fourteen that was emerging as the downtown. That process evolved over time. We adopted a BAGA standard, which is the standard you see through the entire downtown in the public right-of-way. And similarly, we tried to adopt that standard for private property in downtown. There was quite a bit of discussion at that point because the BAGA fixtures are very expensive. So the private sector worked with public sector and came up with a series of lights that are permitted in downtown in private parking lots. And the town carried forward to install the BAGA fixtures on all of the public right-of-way. Over time, since 1998, that particular fixture has become very scarce. It's not readily available. It's on that basis that we're going to be going through the Planning and Zoning Commission through a public hearing process to discover what additional fixtures are available and look to potentially utilizing LED lights instead of the current lights for economic purposes. After the Planning and Zoning Commission reviews and here's public hearings, we're going to bring that to you with a recommendation. One aspect of this that does recognize that things change over time is yearning by the staff for an administrative approval of very similar-looking fixtures. So in the case of a future deficiency in supply, that we can literally have the town manager approve a similar fixture and move forward in conducting business. Understand that Lake Valley, which is currently under construction, will be using the BAGA fixture. They have that in place. So this would be for future public improvements. With that, I'd respond to your questions.
Questions, anyone? Mary?
No.
No.
Marty?
Are we going to be, are we thinking about changing out all of our light fixtures to LED?
At some point in time, yes. But at this point, no. Anything that's new would be LED.
Okay. Because I know the other night at the school board meeting, they had a similar discussion on energy efficiency. They had somebody there. And one of the things that they were talking about was the total exchange of the HPS lights to LEDs. And they said that the cost savings will actually pay for the total reinstallation of new lights. So I just wanted to know where you were thinking on this.
Well, that would be part of the Public Works budget in terms of maintenance and the program that they would establish to undertake the retroification of those lights. That would be through your budgeting process, probably in a coming budget. However, you pointed out correctly that they are at a considerable cost savings. As an example, I did it at my house when they put solar on my house. And though I added a whole bunch of lights with a new addition, my light bill or my electric bill is actually half of what it was with my original house configuration. So there are significant cost savings.
Yeah, Richard, I am absolutely impressed you went away from kerosene lamps. I truly am.
That goes back when Larry was the Public Works Director. He had to go out every night and light those suckers, so.
Councilmember Grossman, we've been put on notice by APS, Arizona Public Service, that they have a maintenance agreement with Public Works for the, how many streetlights do we have now? Two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred? And as they burn out, that APS is wanting to change out the internal workings of the lamps to go to LED. Okay? So over time, as they burn out, they'll be replaced with LED and go forward. Because many of the parts, the internal workings of many lamps, including the BAGAs, are no longer available.
So they're going to be able to just change the internal workings and not change the actual physical appearance?
That is correct.
I'm glad to hear that. That's great.
And then it saves us, unlike the conversation that we had earlier in the week.
Yeah.
Going ahead and paying a small fortune and paying the savings out to a private vendor that over time, they just, as they burn out, they're replaced.
Rick?
No.
Jody, did you have a, no? Anyway, any other questions?
We'll be back to you in September with a recommendation from the Planning Commission.
Good, thank you. Okay, if there's no more questions or comments, we'll move on to number four. Discussion. Technology fees slash com dev.
Coming at this from a historic perspective, we've been on the same building permitting code enforcement software, Exella, since 2002. That was purchased by the town of Prescott Valley through vendor services. That software hasn't been supported for about eight-and-a-half years. We have a very good relationship with a company called IK Consulting. And as council probably remembers, there is a consulting services line in the community development budget where we customize or fix things that aren't compatible with new software that are continually coming out. We have worked with the Aveppi County over the course of the last several years to try to get them to adopt a similar software so that when we annex properties or we do planning, we're not constrained by corporate boundaries or boundaries that are artificially placed by fire districts and things like that. We got the county drinking the juice, and they're prepared to move forward to actually purchase the software. And we're a step behind them, given the current budget scenario with capital projects. Larry asked that I step back and look at coming up with a revenue stream that's necessary to be able to support not only the subscription fees, which for our jurisdiction will be about $56,000 per annum. And we'll park all of our data in a cloud system to where we can retrieve that data. We won't have to maintain servers or do all those things that periodically make Casey Danner crazy. The other is we are data hogs. We've been perfecting the system for a long period of time, so we have lots of data. The worst-case scenario is the conversion costs of that data would be someplace in the neighborhood of $800,000. We're going to look at reducing that cost by jettisoning, where possible, some of the data that we may not necessarily need to carry forward to result in a cost savings. However, the cost of the initial implementation is going to be $600,000 to $800,000. We have to own the licenses before we can actually move forward. So Larry asked me to figure out how to do it. So the proposal staff has brought to you. After looking at all the other jurisdictions in the Quad Cities, Prescott Valley is a bargain to purchase building permits and develop land. There is a very detailed study that's attached to my brief for your consideration, which shows that we're in some instances below the midpoint and many instances even below that. Fees haven't been adjusted in community development since 2002 as well. So on that basis, staff is recommending that we adjust all fees across the board, including subdivision review fees, which are considerably lower than other jurisdictions, as well as building safety fees, which are in line with other jurisdictions. And we adjust those between five and seven percent. That adjustment will result in a revenue stream consistently of between $140,000 and $175,000 per annum. It's the actual implementation that costs the most money. The subscriptions at $56,000 is not, in my opinion, a big deal. The other thing is because we are having a whole host of new services made available by hosting this in the cloud, people will be able to engage us and actually pull building permits over a website as opposed to necessarily having to come to our office. So people that we do a lot of business with, like our master developers, will be able to sit in their office in Phoenix, file for building permit applications, and we in turn can issue those building permit applications electronically. With that, I've given you an overview. Staff does support this action, and there's no need to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Larry would like to see this in place as soon after the beginning of the fiscal year as possible. With that, I'd respond to your questions.
Questions, anyone?
No.
Go ahead. Mike?
Yeah, I just thought it, you know, I think we try to look at how we do business in our community, and sometimes we find areas that we are a little bit behind. And I think it's our job to kind of keep up with technology so we can continue to respond in a very timely manner, the reputation we have relative to different aspects of development. And, you know, I think it's always, do we make the investment now or later? And I think, as always, if we wait later and longer, it'll cost us more in the long run. And I think we need to be proactive and really look at what we can do now to keep up with that technology. So I think it's probably not a bad idea. And again, we're looking forward in terms of how we can do better in the future compared to how we're doing it now.
And as part of the proposal, just to top of mind, suggest that we would annually do a comparison. Though we're not going to take the money and put it in a specific pot for technology. It would be for all of those services that are currently not provided as part of the building permit. And we would try to keep track of what five or seven percent of our revenues will be. There may be an opportunity down the road to look at that and find that, say, through the amortization of the initial investment, you no longer have to convert a bunch of data. You may, at a later date, lower those fees.
And Marty?
Yeah.
How long would the contract be with this company?
It's an annual contract. Aveppi County, because of its size, was able to bid it. And because we were in the hunt at the same time, we played off of each other, and we got a real good bargain, about $2,300 a seat. We've proposed that that contract be obligated on Exella for a period of, no later, excuse me, no, less than five years, and hoping to negotiate that out 10 years. So it's a stagnant or a reasonable increase instead of first year this, next year this, next year even more. They really want our business. We were the first one in Arizona to go to Exella. And we have been to forums and extolled the virtues or value of that software. So they would like to continue with us as a customer.
I think it's actually great that we're doing it. I mean, we have a really good reputation among contractors now, and I think this is just going to improve that. So thanks. Keep it up.
Mary?
Oh, and I was just thinking, as, you know, as we go ahead and move forward with this, you know, the technology reaches across everywhere. So when, if you don't move forward, I could be wrong on this, but if you don't move forward as technology goes in other cities, towns, or states, or however that works goes along, the communication isn't quite as well in regards to your applications, getting online, connecting, those kind of things.
Well, again, from a planning perspective, and we'll be obligated to look at this again, or I'll use another really good example, is the upcoming decadal census. When we start looking at Tiger files and things like that, and how they overlap and how they work, it's going to be a whole lot easier to look at one screen and look at the world as opposed to just the town of Prescott Valley and see how those merge points work. We've done it manually for many years, but this would be something that's going to help a great deal. There's lots of other capabilities, as you would expect, in a new software platform. I say new, this has been on the market for about six-and-a-half years.
Rick?
Well, I think we're finding through our last, this year's budget process that there are a lot of departments that are, that have software issues as far as needing new software. So I'm glad to see that you're pursuing this. And I think we're going to see other departments having to come forward very soon and do the same thing. Where this comment is going is that I think that in future budgets, we need to look at the possibility of putting away a percentage in each of those departments each year so that when the time comes to go into new software, we have the money with which to do that. And whether it's software or whether it's a new car, I think we need to plan for that far enough in advance, where the percentage is small enough that it doesn't hurt us annually, yet when the time comes, we have the money set aside that we can take that kind of action so that we don't have to come up, come up with five or 10 new cars or four or five sets of software. So I think the plan that you're looking at is substantial, and it's valid. Thank you.
Jody?
Go ahead.
Mayor, I agree with Vice Mayor on the sinking fund for this. And I'm sure Larry would probably put in for other sinking funds as well.
We actually have a sinking fund that is used for capital equipment replacement. And that sinking fund is typically populated with dollars from one-time revenues, i.e. building permit fees. It's a one-time revenue. Where many cities got into trouble was when they used growth, and that happened all across the state of Arizona. They used those one-time revenues to actually support their operations. We have gone overboard to make sure that one-time revenues are not used for operational expenses but are used for things like buying police cars. And that's where that fund here in the last three years, the lion's share of it, has gone for police equipment. This year, we were fortunate in that we were able to buy a couple of other vehicles in other departments. And then in the new fiscal year, pending your approval at the next meeting, there's a couple of other vehicles for other departments. But as we return to the health of pre-recession 2007, we actually had a fairly significant pool of dollars for capital equipment replacement, which would include all of our IT needs.
Unfortunately, he didn't consider my request to put off the roof of the library. And I thought putting off the police station to meet my needs was also a good idea.
Oh, you're so brave. Well, a few meetings ago, I got cranky with Larry on some of these issues, as I'm sure everyone will remember. But when I'm looking through my packet and I'm remembering, we don't have a proper tax. We rely on sales tax. And this statement jumped out at me. If the fee is not assessed, the general fund would need to cover these expenses. So, come on, this is just being sensible, logical, and doing good planning.
Well, and as part of this, be certain that we're going to be out talking to our development partners, because they're the ones who are going to spend the money to buy this software. And so all of our master developers will be well-informed, and I'm sure will have some comment. I didn't have a discussion with one of the more prolific builders here. He understands it. He growled at me. He suggested Larry should stick his hand in his pocket, and I said, "That's not going to happen."
His pocket.
His pocket.
Yeah. There was some discussion, and I'll close, but there was a discussion about a subscription process where if you wanted an upgraded service level, i.e. being able to reach out and file permits electronically, and the person I spoke with said that would be most acceptable. Because he wants the services, he doesn't necessarily want to pay for it. But in his mind, if it's an increased service level, he'll pay for it because it makes him more competitive.
Good. Other comments? Questions?
Thanks for your attention.
That must be it. Thank you, Richard. We will move on to the next one. Number five. Discussion. Viewpoint Connector Design Services. Arm?
Well, Mayor, taking a little different, this next exhibit might look familiar to you. This is the viewpoint connector extension. Can we pull that up? This may look familiar to you because here in 2013, we actually completed 30% design plans. I think council's well aware that this viewpoint connector corridor, one of our big transportation corridors, involves some new alignment and actually right-of-way that had, was purchased from state land across that state land parcel back in 2001. Always been a long-term goal to have this viewpoint drive be a significant corridor as a particular alternative to Robert Road, in addition to Glasser Hill Road as a north-south connector. So I think council's seen this before. This exhibit's been shown several times because it does show the particular roadway alignment. This one in particular is the roadway connection between Manley and Roundup Drive. And we did 30% plans a few years ago. And the item we had before you is actually take it to 100% plans. We have a good fund balance in the 1/3% sales tax, so it's good to complete the design because there's fund balance there. It actually starts the construction will help a year from now for this particular project. Just to give council a little update and background, you may recall that this particular roadway corridor will start out as a two-lane interim road. We call it, we're going to build the connectivity first. There's enough right-of-way there. But as we see increased traffic, then we'll build the capacity, which this will actually be a twin of Glasser. If Prescott Valley continues to grow, traffic demand and growth demands that, then obviously we've planned for meeting all of our major arterios like this particular road. So at some point in the future, no different in Glasser over the last 20 years, has gotten to be not there to what it is today. If we continue to see growth, then we'll build out that connectivity in the future. Other one I'd like to show, this actually, we've been talking about technology with Richard's last items. This particular exhibit you see is not an arrow. This was taken by a drone. So I think council may recall, we've talked about this corridor. What you're seeing in the foreground there is actually, we discussed this last phase of the viewpoint channel, that we took the dirt, we took from there and actually started building some of the road grade. That's why the 30% plans made a lot of sense. As you can see, we've already started building some of the road alignment. Anytime we have extra spoiled dirt, we build some of the roadway grade. That saves money because you need somewhere to put the dirt. So not only do we have stormwater capacity improvements, but we actually save money by having some foresight and having things in place to do that. So line engineering, actually, this was a drone flight. I think you're well aware with technology, drones are actually available to very much amateurs. They're pretty inexpensive. So we went out one day, a staff, engineering staff, and watched this drone fly up and take pictures, and we had a lot of fun that day. So I pulled this one out. But you can see the viewpoint channel that just got completed this last, you know, late winter and the connectivity. But I want to show you that corridor through there, where actually, as you see, we've started building the road. You'll see that improved, as we talked about, with a two-lane road and ultimately that ultimate lane section. So as we've talked about different funding sources, as we use flood control funding too, to fund the flood control enhancements. And of course, 1/3% sales tax for this corridor is what builds the viewpoint connector. If you look a little bit too, you can see some of the burnt area. That was that little freaky fire we had when the power poles went down. So if you had that question, that's what you see in the foreground.
That's all green right now.
And it's all green now. So yeah, my photo's maybe 90 days old. But a lot of fun with these drones. Just talk about, you know, it's interesting technology. The engineers are able now that even with drone technology, you can do a lot of your mapping and your engineering work, your mass balance of dirt and design that way. So we're ever keeping up with the technology, and that's the newest thing that, in the engineering world. One thing I do want to point out, too, we are, have received a scope and fee from Dave and Associates through the Town Engineering. But it's important to note that they've also teamed up with local engineer Lion Engineering, did the lion's share of the floodplain work. So Gordon brought him on board so that we don't see that same continuity and all the resource and effort we put in, that we have some stormwater work. Because this is a FEMA floodplain channel. So that really saves money there to keep the same engineer on board. It has all the background, all the computer runs. So that's why if you see Lion Engineering, it's actually a work as a subcontractor. In addition, the biozone with that portion of state land, they do have requirements for cultural resources survey. So we've put that in a scope of work to make sure we stay in good graces with state land and their requirements. We do have the right-of-way, but we'd like to make sure when you disturb, some of that earth moving may disturb some of that floodplain. As part of the engineering, to make sure we deal with Corps of Engineers and FEMA to meet all those particular criterias. So as this corridor continues to build out, you'll see the channelization. So this is great stuff as we continue to build out the significant corridor, not only for stormwater management and floodplain and manage, council may recall a few years ago, we did have a few flooding problems here in stormwater over Manley. I think it's important to point out, you look at those six, 60-inch pipes there, that's going to move a little water through there. So as we continue to move forward, we get better at what we do. Other thing that's important, too, is we talk transportation. I want to go back to our particular cross-section. And as you can see, the multi-use path there, the roadway's important as we continue to build out. But I think council's aware, too, that the Awafria Park is part of this, let's go back one. Well, no, this one's probably a better exhibit. Just to update you, council, we've been working on this for many years in the long-term planning. But as you're well aware, the state land parcel, we have the right-of-way for the road, maybe on the eastern quarter. But if that particular state land piece does sell, I think you're well aware that the Awafria Park is planned on that top half through that floodplain. Lots of planning going on there as we continue to grow out, to make sure that we reserve that particular property as part of our common plan through our general plan. So not only is transportation working of the planning, but also the parks. And what I wanted to leave you with, too, was the multi-use path system we built here in Prescott Valley is also our transportation network for non-vehicle access. So as with any significant corridor, the safety of that multi-use path separated from the traveled lanes, that will get access to the park, direct connection here to our, you know, significant trip generation with our government buildings, school, all of that. This particular corridor can get you to move between either by vehicle efficiently but also the multi-use path. Different funding sources throughout. We're just excited as engineering staff to be able to move forward with this particular design and go build some more infrastructure. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, Marty?
Yeah, I have a question. A lot of, a lot of that land to the, if you go to that picture, okay, to the right of where you're building, which would be east of it, that whole land there for parts of the year is used for cattle and grazing, all the way up to Roundup. Will the fences be moved to the western portion of the roadway so that the cattle are not interfering?
Actually, Councilman Grossman, you'll have what we'll call a game fence on both sides of the roadway in that corridor. So that cattle, they could still graze if that's what they choose to do, if state land continues grazing, or if they choose to sell it. I would like to think that as development continues, that parcel may look very attractive to state land to sell it to a private interest probably for housing. But to your point, yes, you could graze on the east side. There's still a portion, that pie-shaped piece, or even to the west, that what part of the requirement is the roadway, we would build to make sure that there's no cattle crossing there.
But if I could, we had a conversation, Norm, could you go back one slide showing the, no, it's two slides in.
That one.
Right there. You could make out the old Santa Fe Railroad right-of-way through there.
Okay.
The property to the south of the old Santa Fe Railroad. Arizona State Land Department has, presently has an active application for the purchase of those 320 acres. And so once they process that, and if it goes through the process to completion, the agreement that we have with the Arizona State Land Department, and we reminded them of that in the conference call that we had with several of their people, that the purchaser of the south half, 320 acres, is bound by agreement to purchase all 640 acres, in other words, the entire section. And they have to deed to the town of Prescott Valley, the north 320 acres for Awafria Park. This is moving forward. This is not a long-term project. There is an application, and the state land department is moving forward with that active application. And so to your point about grazing, that may be a thing of the past if that is purchased away from state land, from state land department.
That's good to know. Thank you.
Other questions, anyone? Mike?
Yeah, I was just kind of curious. How did we come about situating the way in which that road is placed on a property? Does it match the topography and the?
Yes, it does. If you look at this particular arterial roadway that you can see, we're not going to mess with that natural drainage terrain. But yes, it fits the topography well, and this is really the best. We've done enough background work that this is a good alignment, good geometrics, even for the design speed that we're looking at, too. So to the point, this is really the best alignment to fit the contour, the topography. But that way, you know, in short, too, you get a significant drainage. You don't have significant drainage structures either, so you stay on that side. So actually, as part of as part of the plan, that Roundup Drive area, you can see where the floodplain crosses, that's going to have some big-time drainage improvements there. I think it might be important too, Councilman Whiting, that as you see, that we'd like to depict the, the red line there for the proposed current alignment, that there's no connectivity to the existing older subdivisions to the east. The only connection to the east is at Long Mesa. So, we've had some concern with residents there, and I said, there's no plans right now, and that's what we've put in all our public documents. There's no plan to make any connectivity. They were a little concerned about that.
And we're the ones that picked that alignment. It wasn't necessarily with the input of the, the state?
That was done in 2001, so I would imagine it was state-weighted heavy too. We have a close relationship with them too.
Yeah, okay.
Good. Mary?
No, sir.
Mayor, I do. Oh, Rick?
You know, I would think that that's the common sense place to put that alignment with that floodplain running north and south. If you were to put it in a straight line, you'd end up with a really ugly piece of property between the road and the floodplain that would be virtually useless. So, that kind of makes sense to me, to put it on either side of the, of the floodplain, so.
Any other comments? All right.
Well, we're just saying, if, if you go there and look at it, it's obvious. It's obvious that that's, that's what makes sense.
Just drive over there and look.
Well, or you can get a drone or take you up in a drone and show you, this is what that alignment looks like. You can see the floodplain in there.
Anything else, Norm?
No. Would like to bring it back for your approval next week, ma'am.
I think everyone's agreeable. Bring it back?
Very good. We'll bring it back next week. Thank you.
Okay, move on to number six, discussion. False alarms update. Chief and chief.
False alarm. Salary. There's a salary on the false alarms.
We would do this about two years ago.
I know we did. I thought we resolved. I thought we took care of this.
I know, we'll find out.
If we have a bunch of new people moving in, it'll make a difference too.
Yep, definitely.
I decided to be like Norman, bring a PowerPoint for once. Mayor, members of council, I come before you tonight to talk about a service that law enforcement provides, but only to a small percentage of our citizens, to include both businesses and residents. This service is not only a tremendous strain on our resources, it's an unwarranted strain on our resources. So, I want to talk to you tonight about police response to alarms. Okay, so what is an alarm? An alarm is a mechanical device that's installed in a home or business to detect or alert others to an intrusion. Well, this is an admirable, admirable goal if it can be achieved effectively and efficiently. Alarms can be activated in a number of ways, such as glass breaking, sensing motion, or opening a door or window that has a sensor attached to it. The truth is, the vast majority of alarms are false, and they're false for a number of reasons, mostly to include user error and faulty equipment. So, for an, for example, let me put this in perspective. In calendar year 2016, we responded to 772 burglar alarms. 99.3% of them were false. Now, this is not something exclusive to Prescott Valley. This number is relatively the same across the country, and it's one that I have personally experienced in my entire 32-year career. Of those 772 alarm calls that we went on, only six would have been classified as a criminal offense. Four were burglaries where the alarm worked properly, but the perpetrators were gone before we got there. And two were rocks that were thrown through windows that triggered an alarm. Our cost to respond to all alarms is around $58 per call, but a total cost of over $44,000 a year, which is about the cost of one officer's salary. So, what have we done? In an effort to reduce our false alarms, we have contracted with a company called Public Safety Corporation and their subsidiary Cry Wolf. And think of the irony of that for just a second, Cry Wolf.
Right.
So, it was implemented in 2013. We had expected or hoped to see a 50% reduction in false alarms. What we realized was a reduction of 34%. The interesting thing was, the percentage of false alarms has not changed, nor has the ratio of actual crimes to the number of alarms. So, to be quite honest, we're not gaining, we're not gaining any headway on this. Giving a historical perspective, this depicts a, the decline in alarm calls since 2010. And even with the false alarm reduction ordinance and other strong efforts, we still had 772 in 2016. So, what are, what are some of our options? Well, we could increase the false alarm assessment that we give to people who have false alarms, and I'm telling you, it's just, it's not effective. In fact, many people and a great many businesses look at that fee as an expected cost of doing business because they know we're going to come when those alarms go off. Whether they're false or not, they don't really care because that's their, their security blanket for us coming out. We could institute suspended service to repeat call locations. So, people who are chronic abusers or, or false alarms, we could just suspend them. Well, even if we did that, we would have only affected about 10 alarms in the same year. So, that's really not going to accomplish anything. What our desire is, is to go to a verified response. Now, this would allow our sworn personnel to focus on more valuable activities. So, if you looked at the San Jose Verified Response that was included in the RFCA, there were some questions and answers in there, and their goal of their program is the same as ours, and that is, so we can redirect our resources to be more properly and efficiently used throughout the city on proactive patrols instead of going and responding to false alarms. Some of the things we've heard from the public, when they make comments to the, the program administrator, are things like a lack of equity. So, once they have a false alarm, they are now required under the ordinance to go and register that. But their neighbor doesn't, because their neighbor may not have had a false alarm yet. So, there's that misunderstanding and a little bit of, little bit of hostility, if you will, because now they have to register and pay for registration and their neighbors don't. And in the three and a half years that we have contracted with PSC, we have received $5,737, three and a half years, an average of about $1,600. They have received $42,800. And don't forget, it costs me about $45,000 a year to respond to this with officers. So, somebody's benefiting from this, but it's not us. The truth is that the paradigm that alarms contribute to a safer community is simply not accurate. It has actually created a disparate impact to those who do not own an alarm. So, for all of those times when we are out there responding to alarms that we know 99.4% are going to be false, we could be proactively in a neighborhood where we get repeated calls about the theft of mail, continual automobile burglaries, maybe residential burglaries, or other problems that are going on. And instead of us being able to concentrate our resources and our efforts to combat those problems, our guys are running around town answering false alarms. And if you look at the history of the alarm companies, some, whatever, 60, 70, 80 years ago, somebody decided, hey, let's create a burglar alarm. Bet you we can make some money off of this. And their ideas, I guess, were, were very pure, but in the end, what does it come down to? They want to make money. Alarm installers install or, or companies make and then they install these alarms, they get paid for that. People buy a monthly monitoring service, they pay for that. There's an alarm business association, so it's, it's just like any other association, all these alarm companies and, and monitoring services subscribe and pay dues to this association. They make money. So, again, there's people who are benefiting from this, but it's not us and it's not our residents. So, as the community continues to grow, so will alarm ownership, and the problem perpetuates. And this doesn't take into consideration the increases and the other calls for service that we have listed here. Those are projected. It is our desire to go to a verified response for all alarms except holdup alarms, panic alarms that people have to push a button for, medical alerts, and loud audible alarms from a person's home. The course of action we are requesting is not unique. In fact, it is being implemented across the country as evidenced by the San Jose handout in your, your RFCA. Now, I will warn you that the Alarm Industry Association will push back on this course of action. They called my deputy chief this afternoon and said, and they, and they are from, the current person we've been kind of dealing with is in Nevada. He somehow knew that we were coming before you tonight with this proposal. He called my deputy chief today to say, oh, I hear you're going tonight. You will receive pushback from the alarm industry and the association. And they will tell you examples of where people have lost their lives because of verified response. But I'm going to tell you right now, we have found no such evidence. In fact, my question to them would be, how many people die in burglaries that did not have an alarm? And instead of me responding to false alarms somewhere, maybe I could have been in that neighborhood patrolling and doing something proactive. And the one thing that we have found in our research is several examples of police officers who have died in traffic accidents on the way to alarms that prove to be false. I will have this debate any day with the Alarm Association or any other alarm company. So, to take this course of action, we would have to change the town code, and that is why I'm here tonight. I'm seeking your guidance and approval. And with that, I will answer any questions that you may have, and if I can't answer them, he will.
Okay. Mary, you got a question? Mary, did you?
Um, so, the, we wouldn't answer the calls anymore, but we would be answering some calls. Did you say something about there would be a distinction to us knowing, or did I misunderstand?
So, what verified response means is, before, we're going to go out, somebody's going to have to verify that a crime is occurring or a crime occurred. So, there are ways through technology, there's that word again.
Yes.
That alarm monitoring companies can have a service where they have video, they can have audible microphones inside of a business, and they can hear glass breaking, they can see people breaking in or forcing doors open. That would be considered a verified response. And then if they called, and then we, we would go out.
Okay.
But simply going out to 772, that, that 766 of them are going to be false is just ridiculous. So, we want to implement this verified response. So, that's one way. Another way is if a neighbor sees somebody breaking into a house and then we get an alarm, that's verified. If there's a loud audible alarm and it's been going off next to your house for an hour, call us. We're going to come out and take a look at it. Trying to think of some of the other, oh, panic alarms. So, panic alarms require the pushing of a button. They're not activated because you come into the house and you forgot your code, and you're trying to remember it, and you go, to heck with it, I'll let them come. That, you know, a panic alarm, you actually have to push the button. Same with a holdup alarm in banks. We're not going to stop going to those because that requires manual manipulation of a button to, to, in order to activate the alarm. All of those, or medical alerts. If somebody has a medical alert and they press their button, and it goes to our dispatch, we are going to go on that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I understand.
Any other questions? Mike?
Yeah, I was, I know when we talked about this before, we had great expectations, and I think one of the issues was that when we responded, usually there was nobody there, either a manager or owner or otherwise. And so, it took more or less kind of babysitting until somebody could come and turn it off. So, I'm, I'm assuming that still occurs, that of these false alarms, a lot of that is waiting for somebody to come to either turn it off or verify or respond one way or another.
Right. So, for example, let's say somebody closes up their business. At the end of the day, they go home and they didn't secure their front door, but it's closed, so the, the contacts are set. And I've heard that here in Prescott Valley, it gets kind of windy sometimes. And so, if it, if it jostles that door or opens that door, and now those contacts are broken, we're going to respond to that alarm, or we would in the past. Now, we find an open door. So, of course, we're going to check the building to make sure nobody's in there, nobody's done anything. But then the other thing we do is we wait until a key holder can come down and secure that location. And, you know, if they're, if they're living in Black Canyon City, we're waiting.
Right. Well, I also, you were mentioning this panic button. Are those actually coming into the police department, or is it through a, a company?
I believe most of them still go to a monitoring company.
Yeah. So, they'd have to call you to let you know we have a panic button situation?
Yeah. So, for example, the, the bank robberies we had six, seven months ago, whatever it was, those were alarms that were actually pressed by employees of the bank. Those were valid alarms because somebody tried to rob their bank.
Right.
And it occurred on three different banks. And that, that worked, and we'll still go on those, absolutely. But that requires a thoughtful manipulation of a button in order for it to happen. A lot of times you get kids who come home from school.
Yeah.
And they open the door, and then they go over to the keypad, and they're going, I think this is it, and they put it in, and it's not in. And the next thing you know, we're standing there for kids coming home after school.
So, the other, I guess, consideration is what is the, the number of businesses versus residential that are playing into this number of 700? Are we just, we're not, are we looking at 700? Are they purely commercial?
I would think majority business, yeah. I would think primarily businesses. Then again, you're, you're probably going to get some pushback because, like I said, it's been my experience throughout my career, that a lot of corporations and businesses, they, they write that $100 penalty check with glee.
Yeah.
Because they know that we're coming.
Right.
And they, and that's all they care about. And I care more about the safety of my officers and quite frankly, the safety of the community, because while I'm continuing to be his servant for $100, that doesn't even come to us, I could be better utilizing my resources and my police officers, doing way better things and more proactive things.
Yeah. And the last question I had, I know when we discussed this and implemented the newer system, that there were routinely the same businesses that have these issues. Is that still the case? No.
That has changed.
That has changed, okay. It's just more widespread, I guess, than, than it was before. Okay, thank you.
Marty?
Yeah. I don't know. Just based on commercials I've seen on TV and just knowing a little bit about the alarm system business, I, I know more and more people are going to a video with audio alarms where they could get it on their smartphone. Okay, so, that would be, that would be good for you because that's a verifiable alarm. The other thing I have a question about is, how many are weather-related? Besides wind, we have, okay, on, even on a day like today, okay, it's warm during the day, and then it cools off at night. Now, knowing a little bit about electronics, they expand and shrink, does that cause a false alarm because the connection is now changing?
Well, I'm not an expert on shrinking and expanding, but what I am here to tell you from, from a lot of experience, weather has you, from a lot of experience, weather has a tremendous impact on alarms. So, for example, after a lightning storm, and I hear we also have monsoons here for some reason. And so all those lightning strikes that we're having, and it's not sky lightning like I'm used to, it's ground strikes, that plays havoc with alarms. And when we have a lightning storm, or even a significant monsoon that comes through with winds, lightning, and rain, that's all my guys are doing for about two hours, is restoring, when the power gets restored, all they do is go to every business in the town that has an alarm, because they're all going off. And to your other point, the smartphones, so the doorbells that people have nowadays that shows a video of somebody standing on the front door, I don't know that person, they're not supposed to be there, those are verified. We would be more than happy to go to that address.
Um.
Mary?
Wait, did you have more, Marty?
Marty?
Actually, yeah, just one last thing. I mean, the one part of your presentation that you just said a little while ago, that I know is probably the most disconcerting to you, is the fact that you have to have an officer stand there and wait until the key holder arrives. Having been in that position as a, I used to, when I was in retail, for me, it was an hour ride to get to the store. And I know, you know, and when I got there, there was no police officer waiting. So, you know, a part of me is glad that our officers sit and wait, but a part of me is also disturbed that if they have to wait there an hour or two, we're losing a lot of productivity in that, and if we could change that, that would be great.
Well, another thing to keep in mind, that all alarm responses require two officers. We don't send one officer. So, it's always two cars and two officers that are driving to these scenes. And again, that's resources that could be so better utilized somewhere else.
Mary?
Well, I'm glad to know, though, that you, we send two officers, because that's always important. You know, our officers are important, their families, send them out to serve the community, and we have a responsibility to send you back home. That's how I feel. On another note, when people have these alarm systems, and I'm speaking from absolute experience, and then you decide not to have an alarm system anymore, you kind of cancel your whole agreement with them or whatever, but you get to keep all of this equipment, you know, that you've bought into. That alarm does and still go off. And it is absolutely, you think it's disconnected, but it is not, even though you're not paying for it anymore, and the thing will go off on its own. And I'm a person speaking from experience. And you wonder, how does it go off when you haven't really had this for like a year and a half? Well, let me tell you, it does, and the whole neighborhood hears it. So.
And on those, we would still come out. If it's an audible, a loud audible alarm, obviously it's going to be disruptive to the neighborhood. We're going to come out and check that out. We'll cut it off, we'll hit it with a hammer, we'll do something.
Oh, I was already there. But I'm just saying that, the fact is, is that even if you've taken these services off, these alarms still somehow get activated, and that again is a problem.
I would say the majority of people who own alarms do not have a monitoring service. They just have it hooked to a loudspeaker or something like that, so that there's an audible alarm when there's an intrusion, or the window opens, or whatever. But again, we'll come out on those if those are going on for long periods of time, and it won't shut off if you're on vacation or something, we'll still be going out to check those. But again, just because you have an alarm, and it goes off and then it resets, if it's not verified, we're not going to go with your direction.
No, I understand.
Jody?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I agree that it's a large number of alarms, and it's not the best use of our resources. Currently, are we using any verification prior to sending our forces out?
No.
Okay.
Oh, yep. I may stand corrected, hold on.
It doesn't happen often. So we are using enhanced call verification, which is an industry standard that requires the monitoring companies to make at least two phone calls before they call our dispatch center. So it's a form of verification. Hopefully, the first person that you call answers and says, hey, no, it's okay, it's probably my brother, he's staying at the house, doesn't have the code. But then again, if you don't get the first person, hopefully the second person cancels it. But many times, they just don't answer the phones, so.
Deputy Chief, I appreciate that clarification. I would imagine there's some stats with that as well. Once those calls are received, and the homeowner says, no, it's a false alarm, at that point, do we not have to respond?
That call is going to be going to the alarm company or the monitoring company. And if they're satisfied, if they get the code, that they're supposed to have the verbal code at that point, then they will not dispatch it, or they will not send it to our dispatch center.
Okay.
But I do think that brings up another point, again, which is kind of the irony of having alarms. So now we have this two-call verification system. So you call, it's one ring, two rings, three rings, oh, nobody answers. I don't know if they leave a voice message or not. Now I got a better call to the second one, so they call the second one, you know, ring, 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 oh, no, no answer there, so, okay, we better call dispatch, and they send somebody there. Even if it wasn't an actual burglary, they're probably in Toledo by now. So really, I mean, what, these are, and I'm not trying to be disparaging to alarm companies. I may sound that way, but I'm really not trying to be. But these are procedures and suggestions that have been put in place by people who don't want us to do what we're suggesting that we want to do, which is literally happening across the country, though. Because everybody is finally realizing, after 30, 40 years of doing this, that you'd think that they get it right, so we gave them an opportunity, fix it, teach people how to do it, make it a little bit more foolproof, do something that you're not going to disrupt the police all the time, disparately because of all those people who don't own them. And yet, after 40 years or more, they still haven't perfected it. And I think across the country, law enforcement agencies are saying, I've had it, we're done.
I appreciate the information. I also know that homeowners and business owners have paid for a service for peace of mind. And knowing that our police officers do respond provides that peace of mind. I'm definitely interested in what you have here. I would appreciate more information, though, on the actual service, or what we're calling the verified response, as far as such things, such as specifications, types of verification. I want the whole picture on that. Is that something that I could receive in the next couple of days, so I can look over that in time?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
He said he'll do it.
Laura, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Make a comment really quickly, and it kind of relates to what Councilwoman Rooney's been saying. So, the police, in a way, have filled a gap in service for years. The alarm industry created a service, knowing that the police would provide the backend of that service. And so I think there has been a delay in their technological development and push to advance their industry to the standard where I think it should be today, which is that the use of video and audio monitoring in people's homes and businesses should be a lot more prevalent and affordable than it is. And so as long as we continue to fill that gap, I think we're going to see the industry lag behind in development.
Laura?
Good point. He's taller than me.
I lost track of the number of ride-alongs that I did in Phoenix, and then I did the first years I was here. And how many times the ride-along was sitting at a repeat offender business? And that's the term I'm going to use. Because I watched the departments in Phoenix, and I watched all of you here, work so hard with the businesses and with the citizens. I bet you could tell me which businesses consistently you have to call out to. I'm not going to ask you to do that, that would not be right. But I bet that's how much you know about this community, and how often you have to go to the exact same location. Those are the ones that you're asking for help for. And that's logical, and we have to find a way to manage that end of it and still protect the citizen end of it, you know, where they truly have a need. It sounds like a Solomon decision to me that you're being forced to make, and I resent that you're faced with that. Because I listened to you carefully, and I've read this carefully, and I did a little research on my own. Our community isn't alone. Communities all over America are suffering this. We have acute budget issues all over, we're trying to solve. And I, I don't know how you're going to do that. Even if we agree, you know, to have you make the decision you're asking for, your problem isn't solved yet. And I just want you to think about that piece. It will solve a percentage of it, but it will not be a full solution. And I don't think there is one, to be fair to you.
Well, I will tell you this, we are trying to find a balanced solution, because there are communities across the country who do not go on alarm spirit. They don't go, under any circumstances. So, we're trying to find a balance, we're trying to find a median. And, but I would ask Councilwoman, and I, when you were on all those ride-alongs, was the officer you were with actually, you know, patrolling somewhere or trying to do something proactively?
Yes. We got called off a one from an accident, and I will never forget that. And of course, it was, it's a wonderful expression today in Nothing Burger, when we got to the alarm. The wind had caused it. And that officer was needed at that accident scene. It was dreadful, and I'm never going to forget that. So that's why I'm so non-plus that you're still going through all of this.
Vice Mayor?
I just want to make sure I understand this correctly, that with the 772 burglar alarms that you've responded to in that year, there had been, in most cases, two phone calls made each time, and you still had 93 percent, or 99.3 percent, false alarm rate. Now, in my mind, the first thing a business should think about is not how fast the police is going to get there, but how fast they can call their insurance company. Because that should be the first response for a burglary. I think. Same thing with the homeowner. Have they paid their homeowner's insurance policy? So it shouldn't bounce back on the police department. That's just my opinion.
Well, and to your point, Councilman, like Deputy Chief Edelstein said, there is that gap that's been created. Well, you know, the police will respond. And this is for people who can afford to buy an alarm system and then pay the monthly monitoring service. And there's a lot of people out there that can't do that. Why do we not owe them the same duty as someone who can afford to do it?
That's the Solomon piece I was talking about. That's the piece that disturbs me. When your officers are going to anywhere where you've gone frequently, somewhere in this town, someone needs that officer.
Absolutely.
Mary, you had a comment?
You know, no, I'm okay. I'm going to pass.
Mr. Mayor, I had one more question. That is, it sounds like, too, that all the calls that come in to us go through dispatch.
Correct.
And I know we're going through a negotiation now, where we're going to be, they're counting the number of calls we get, that's going to be assessed as far as our fee into that system. So I think there's an additional cost that we're incurring as well.
Well, I will tell you that our fees that PRCC, Prescott Regional Communications Center, charges us is based on the number of calls that come in that they dispatch us on. So there were 668 calls in 2016 that we paid for.
Right.
More than one way.
Right.
And again, nothing came of it.
Right. Well, it doesn't seem like a lot, but I think in the picture of resources, it does make an impact. And, you know, I think when we talked about this three, maybe it been three years ago, my feeling was that we are taking the right approach. You know, we are being proactive, looking at ways that we could reduce the calls. And I think we've done our homework, and I think this is just another approach to see if we can make an impact on those calls that are false alarms.
And also, to your point, we're not sure, because I didn't bring that, but I will tell you, if it's not our top call for service, it is one of our top calls for service.
Because who knows?
Yeah. And again, another one of our calls for service is retail theft. It's, you know, we don't like to do it, but you know what? When they call us from Walmart and say they have somebody in custody, guess what? They usually have somebody in custody. Ah, voila. Same thing when we get calls for accidents. When we get there, there's cars that have dents in them. When we get an alarm call, we don't know. And 99.3 percent of the time, it's false. So, being one of our highest number, or highest percentage of calls for service, and to be almost positive it's going to be not worthy is bad. And that brings up another problem, which is the complacency that police officers across the country get into when responding to alarms, because they have it in their head that this is just, oh, it's another false alarm. And I can probably find examples of police officers who have been ambushed and killed during a response to alarms that were actually real, but they were so complacent because of the number of false alarms.
Councilman Whiting, if I could just add in that the cost of that dispatch portion of the response to alarms is included in the cost that's been presented tonight.
Mary, comment?
Mayor and council, would you like to see more information and have this come back to you in a work study in two or three, four weeks?
Yes.
I don't know if there's more information. I know Jody mentioned more. Anybody else have anything special?
What could you bring back? What do you have available? Because I don't want to be spending a lot of time and effort on staff hiring.
I mean, I personally believe that the facts that's presented tonight are compelling. That's my opinion. We could get some other things, like specifically, what could alarm companies or other people do to substantiate a verification of an alarm? We could bring those kinds of things back. But, I mean, really, this is something, again, that's a movement across the country. San Jose did theirs in 2012. Again, there are probably some larger cities in the country, like Philadelphia, Detroit, Chicago, New York, they probably don't even, they don't even go on alarms. And so, we're trying to balance this, because we're trying to make sure that the people who have been disparaging impacted in this neighborhood, in this community, who can't afford alarms, that they also get the police presence in their neighborhoods, instead of being somewhere else that is false.
Any other comments? Anything else that you'd like to learn?
If you want additional information, we'd be more than happy to send it to you. Absolutely.
Good. Do you have a comment, Steve?
Chief and Deputy Chief, I just encourage you guys to provide whatever information you're going to provide, provide it to everyone. That would be beneficial. Thanks.
Anything else?
So there is one other thing that we could bring back before a request for action, and that would be a model ordinance, what it would look like differently than what it looks now.
No, that's, I think we'd like.
That could be the topic of another work study, and then we could take it from there to an RFCA.
Well, not only a model ordinance, but it would be very useful to find out how many other cities and towns are going this direction, as opposed to those that have not tried to tackle this. And that would be very important, to see if this, in fact, is moving, a movement going across the country, and see how that plays out.
And can I just clarify, Councilwoman Rooney, you're looking for specifics on what does verified response look like? What does it mean to the community?
Yes. Deputy Chief, the information I have here is not sufficient for me to make an informed decision. I also look at our citizens, those who already have a service or paying for a particular service. What would the service look like going forward? Those that would come in and buy press? Those that would come in and buy fresh service, they're not going to know the difference. But those who already have the service, they would. So, if you have specifications, what type of verified responses would there be in this? I, you know, give me the whole picture, please. It needs to be defendable.
Yes.
Good. Mary, you had a comment?
Oh, you know, the consequences, that's another thing, how you were saying, how some cities and towns and across the country don't even go anymore. And I'd be interested to know, has there been any consequences come back to those cities or that government, or, you know, in that sense of it?
So, I'll give you an example that was brought to our attention today. I told you, I mentioned the gentleman from Nevada who's with an alarm association who called Deputy Chief Edelstein, and he said, "Well, you know, this verified response, it can have consequences." And he threw off some example of where someone had, a homeowner had been killed because of verified response. Well, when he looked into it, it wasn't verified response. It was actually an agency who had a delayed response to alarms. So, what that means is, they could have all of these other calls coming in, like accidents or thefts or other crimes in progress, and they would keep pushing the alarm call down because, again, they're probably going to be false. Well, in this case, it was, it was a real one, and the person, the homeowner, was killed. There's no liability on us to do that, because, again, there is no duty that's established just because you have an alarm and just because you have a monthly service that you pay for. That doesn't create a duty on my part. So, we will, we will go when we can, or these agencies would go when they can, but they pushed them way down the line. And we're not really even saying that. We're saying if it's a verified alarm, if there's a panic button that's pushed, if it's whatever, then we'll go. We're going to go. And we'll go in the same manner we always do.
Okay.
Good. Mike?
Yeah, I just want to make one last comment. I guess, my last two homes, I've had alarms, and both in one home, and this was in the metro Phoenix area, it was never used. Here, it was. And it was because of an animal and not any break-in. And I depend on my service, my company, to help me in terms of if there is a need to respond. And I've never thought of it in a way as to looking at the police department to respond. I think I pay a company to do that for me. And then they verify, and in the case where we had an animal trip and alarm, they verified and they did not call the police. So, I think they did their job, so.
Excellent. Yeah, exactly.
Anything else? Chief, I think you've got your questions answered. You've answered ours.
Okay. We will come back at a future date with a model ordinance and a more structured explanation of what verified is.
Everybody agree?
Yes.
Let her rip, chief.
Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Okay, we're going on to number seven, discussion, vice mayor rotation. Larry, you got a comment?
Mayor and council, it is that time of year that we go ahead, and you, as council members, choose amongst yourselves to identify a vice mayor. I believe that our practice now is that that is for a two-year period of time, and it's up to you. Diane has ballots available, and at your request, we will distribute those, and you make your choices.
Good. I think that vice mayor has done more to make my life easier than almost anything else. And I've had some really top-notch assistants first this year. Of course, it's been Rick for the last two years. There was Laura for a couple of years, and several others over the years. And I know there's been several people that have expressed an interest. Every one of the council members is qualified, not only to be a vice mayor, but also to be a mayor. And I think every one of these people on this council will be good. I know that several, some have expressed an interest in it. I think Mike is one of them. I know Laura would like to be reappointed. I'd like to keep Rick on, but I think it's appropriate that we do make a change. It's been really a big help for me. It's not just that they're titled vice mayor. I've had that. But these vice mayors, especially Rick and Laura, during their terms, they have gone to different meetings. We've got some serious issues that they've participated in, in the last few years, and more of them coming up. Prescott wants to talk about the airport. We got the PSPRS issue, a lot of legislation issues. It really can take a lot more time than just having the title of vice mayor. So, I don't know. Rick, you got any comments?
Well, it's been my pleasure to represent you and the town for these past two years. And you're right, it does take a lot of time, a lot more than I expected. And, you know, each year, it seems that there's more, more to do. I don't know if we find more or if more is thrust upon us, but it has been my pleasure, and it is time for someone else to step up. But I thank you for selecting me the last time around, and that goes to all the members of the council that were here. It's been a very good experience for me, and I'll remember it. So, thank you very much.
Laura, any comments?
It's humbling, actually, because I learned, had learning opportunities that I didn't have as a council member. That was what I enjoyed so much. And it is surprising how much time it takes. It's absolutely amazing how much time. And Harvey, I want you to know how much it meant to me when you asked me if I would be willing to serve again. That validated that I had provided value to you, and I feel honored, feel honored that you asked me if I would serve again.
You did an outstanding job. Anyone else have any comment? Mary, did you have a comment?
You know, I just want to say that when it comes to this position, well, as a vice mayor, the experience is very important. And the years of experience of going to meetings and doing these kind of things are very, very important to the town and to the community. And coming from a point of business, standard when you give people positions you give them because of that experience, and you know that if, for some reason, they had to take the higher level, that you know that the town and the community would still move forward in a very good and secure manner, and that they would roll right into that position, and the community itself wouldn't even feel the bump. And I weigh a lot on that. That's just something.
Mike had a comment?
No, not really. I think I do agree that the members of the council who have been on a little longer have had that exposure and experience, which really does help, I think, when you take on the vice mayor position. And I do appreciate, I think, Laura Lee and Rick and their leadership as well as the mayor, so I'm sure we'll carry on either way, so.
Marty, you had some thoughts?
For those that may not be aware, I sat in the audience for three years prior to becoming a member of this council. And during those years and my first few years on the council, there was always a rotation, okay? And if you go back and you look at the list, and every year, it was just, it was always somebody new, okay? And then in, what was it, oh, 2014, 2013, 14, we started with a two-year rotation. And, you know, everybody that has done the job has done it well. And, you know, the communication between the mayor and the vice mayor has to be open and often, so that if they do go to a meeting, or they're covering for the mayor at a different meeting, they're able to properly represent the town. The other thing is, having the position of vice mayor, you also have to have the time to be able to do it and attend all these meetings. And not all of these meetings are next door. A lot of them are in Phoenix, or Tucson, or Flagstaff. So, you're talking, you know, two, three, four-hour rides each way. And then you end up sitting in a meeting for, you know, one or two hours, and some of them longer. So, you have to be able to have the time and the availability to do it. But you also have to have, you know, part of it is also the experience. But I think keeping it on a rotational basis, so that the same person doesn't do it, you know, time after time, I think before someone does it a second time, a lot of other people should be doing it a first time. And I think it's important, okay? But it also comes down to the confidence that the mayor has and the person to be able to do it. So, you know, without us, you know, right now, we're giving ballots, but no one has, you know, except for Michael, no one has actually said, you know, stepped forward and say, you know, "I have the time and I want to do the job." You know, so I don't know how we want to base the voting tonight. And that's a difficult step, you know? Because according to open meeting law, we can't talk about it among ourselves, so we have to discuss it here. So, you know, I'm going to be brutally honest, you know? You know, I know talk has been mentioned to me that, you know, to nominate Laura Lee, and she's done it before, but, you know, a part of me says, "We need new blood to do it." Also, a part of me, you know, I'll be brutally honest, and Laura Lee, if she were to do it tomorrow, she'd do an awesome job, and I know it, okay? But Laura Lee holds, wears so many hats, and she's traveling so often, you know, it's going to be difficult for her to, especially now that Harvey is asking, you know, the mayor is asking, you know, more of the vice mayor to sit in his place for other meetings. So, I think it'll be a little more difficult for Laura Lee to do it now than she did it a few years ago. So, I'm just being honest about it. So, you know, there are those of us that have the time to do it, but we've never been given the responsibility, and we don't wear that many hats. So, I just think it's something for all of us to consider and think about, you know, and, you know, find out, you know, I would love to see who else, besides Michael and Laura Lee, might be wanting to do it. So, that's just my opinion.
Thank you. Marty, hello, Jody?
Mayor, I appreciate that Vice Mayor Rick Anderson stepped up and performed this duty, and that it is. Marty's right. It's, it is a duty. It takes a lot of time, and anyone here, I think, is capable. And I appreciate that we have good people here on this council. Thank you.
This council is absolutely an outstanding council. Every single member of this council. And I've had a few years of experience. This is, I think, my 18th year as vice mayor. And I've had one vice mayor that self-nominated himself, but when it came time to do that, he said, "Look, I work days. I do not do evenings. I do not do weekends." Well, that was not much help. But both Laura Lee and Rick have absolutely stepped forward and been there when I needed that backup. And believe me, there's a lot of times when I'm conflicted with two or three events at one time. So, it's been, whatever. Any other comments? Anyone else? Rick, you had any other?
No. The only thing I would add, Mayor, is that I would hope that if anyone were nominated and they felt they couldn't honestly give their time, that they would simply say so. So, I don't see a problem with that. So, you know, I really don't see a problem with voting for whom you think should get the position, and we'll go from there. If it takes us five or six or 10 ballots, sometimes it takes that long to pick the pope, and I certainly wouldn't equate this to picking a pope. So, I would think we could probably get through this process fairly quickly, so.
Okay. Mary, you got a comment?
Well, I just, one last thing. So, when I first came on the council, we used to do something where it was every year, and someone new would just kind of rotate into that. And so, I'd been a council member for about one year, and someone said it was my turn to be vice mayor. And, you know, for me, that really froze me, because I took it to a level of business, and I was thinking about, what if we ran our government like this? It's just because it's your turn, so if we have a town manager, and they've been the town manager for a year, but then all of a sudden, we're going to rotate the next person, and then that person happens to be maybe, you know, the cashier at the water department counter. I'm talking about a community here, a community that needs leadership with experience. And as much as it may sound nice to be vice mayor, it's not about me, and it's not about that one person. It's about you being the leader and a servant, and a public servant to a community of Prescott Valley. But not only that, you have to be a servant to the whole county in really a sense of it all. And you need to do a good job, you know, because it's not about you, it's about the people. And they need you to be there, and you need to be dependable, and you need to know what you're doing. And when the call comes in that, "You got to go to this meeting," then you got to go. And so, I absolutely am so glad that, number one, we don't do that kind of rotation anymore. Number two, I'm really glad that we take this person on for two years. Because, again, the experience and the time is so important. And if you have to be that person who's the vice mayor, and then step up to being the mayor for whatever reason, then you better know, there's about 50,000 people that are going to be looking at you for good leadership. And you need to be there, and you need to know what you're doing, because they need you to be that leader.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else? How do you want to do it? Do you want to have an open nomination, or do you want to just put your name, your choice on the ballot?
I think we just need to make a choice, and put it on the ballot, and let's see where it goes.
Would that be agreeable with everyone? Marty?
Yep.
Everyone else? You got a bag to put him in? Look, you're getting sophisticated there, Larry.
That is Diane's bag.
Diane's bag.
With a hat.
The ballot bag.
That was a ridiculous. That was pretty tacky, was it?
It would appear that Laura Lee Nye has been selected, she has the majority of the votes cast.
Oh, thank you, Diane.
Congratulations, Vice Mayor.
Appreciate that.
Now, Mayor, it's my understanding, then, that next week, we actually do the vote, the official vote?
Actually, just next week, you will have to just ratify the action you just took.
Okay, great. Thank you, Diane.
You're welcome.
With that, I think there's no further comment. With that, I think there's no further comment. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming. I hope you enjoyed it. Good to see you again.